I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Carla, while you're up?
Oh, okay, while you're up. You did that first thing. Okay. Twenty twenty-five. Okay, the first page after the cover page is the workers' compensation renewal for January 1, 2025. Coverage is with iPad. And we're using a total estimated payroll of $1,569,347 for the 2025 renewal. That's the 2023 audited payroll plus nine percent after consulting with Brandy. We went through 23, I believe, 22, 23 with some significant payroll increases. And in 2023, our audit premium at the end of the year was $15,559. So we're trying to get the payroll estimates up there where we don't have large audit premiums the following year. Two things that drive the workers' compensation premiums is your payroll and your loss experience modification factor, which is based on three years, which this year is 2021, 2022, and 2023. So I've outlined those claims, that claims information. Our experience mod is a 1.99, which is a tad bit down from 2.02, but you are paying 99% more because of your claims experience. Now, the good news is next year, we will, we're working our way out of a bad claim cycle that we had. So next year, the $90,000 in claims for 2021 will fall off, and we will pick up the 2024 claims, which to date look pretty good. But we still have a 2022 year there that's pretty bad as well, so we'll see. But we are working our way out of it because we're putting together two pretty good years right now in '23 and '24. So bottom line, I've shown there the '23 premium, your '24 premium, $71,135, and our 2025 premium, So that's an increase of $1,347. The actual rates on the workers' comp have gone down for a hundred, but your payroll's up, and we're still dealing with that experience modification factor. Just a reminder for any volunteers that the town has, they need to be rostered and put on a list before they volunteer, and that list needs to be provided to Brandy and myself. So we want to make sure we do that. The other thing I put in here, I want to remind you that some of our police officers are now in that 1977 plan, and they're covered for medical only under our workers' compensation. So their lost wages, death benefits, et cetera, go back to that plan, 77 plan. Any questions on the workers' comp? Little more information in the second packet. I put a tab on your packets there to kind of get to the meat of this. There's a lot of fluff in there and information. So two things in looking at this year are increases that we were, we've had because of our projects and more things to ensure. We've also had, which is a little not typical for us, but our claims experience this year for liability. We've got two open general liability claims, so that's affecting our premium and is also affecting some deductibles. So if you get to this page that I tabbed, I think that's the first page. Yes, it is. I'll just kind of highlight, the general liability's the first thing there. The company, the underwriter, has applied a $5,000 deductible per claim, including any claims expense or attorney fees associated with that claim. And that's kind of generated from our claims experience this year. I don't know, three or four inches down there. Special events, we have not calculated any special events this year. Last year for 2024, when I was here, we had already calculated in your bicentennial event. Then when you did the summer event, the Chautauqua, or whatever you called it, there was an additional $250 premium charge for that event. So this year for 2025, we haven't included any special events. So if you are going to hold any special events, we'll have to address those. Public officials liability and employment practices there at the bottom of that page. The deductibles are now $2,500 deductible per claim on both of those items. The next page on law enforcement, that deductible has been increased to $5,000 as well. Not driven by claims, just kind of industry standards on what we're seeing is increased deductibles on certain coverage lines. One of the biggies under property coverage, right now, our total buildings and contents coverage is $29,811,086. I've included a schedule of those items in the back of the packet, but we did add $156,000 in water treatment plant upgrades, $187,000 at the Strawberry Road lift station for a compactor, and we added $1 million for the US 41 lift stations. So I understand there are two new ones up there. So our property values have been increased accordingly for adding those items, as well as just an inflation increase of 5%. So we're up, I believe, a little over, about $2 million in property values. We do have a $5,000 deductible per claim for the buildings and contents. Next page, I just want to mention and remind you that under, we have equipment breakdown coverage, but the sub, the electrical substation is not included for coverage. The board made that decision, I think it was three years ago, because the cost was going to be over 30 grand to put equipment breakdown coverage on the substation. We can revisit that if the board desires, but it is pretty costly. Automobile schedule is basically no changes, except at the very beginning of 2024, we added a Gator. So that's now, that's included in this, as it was when you got it. In the marine coverage, we added two mowers and two EV charging stations in 2024, and then we just recently added 27, I couldn't believe this, 27 decorative streetlights for the South Market Street project. And Doug gave me a figure of $260,595 to add those 27 streetlights. Okay, page four of six gets to what you all want to know, which is our annual premium for 2025, and that is $87,349. That's up $13,352, which is 18%, but that includes the additional things we've added with the property coverage. I did talk to the underwriter about the increased deductibles, and they indicated that if we had not increased those deductibles, you'd probably be looking at another $10,000 in premium. We can reevaluate the general liability deductible, and maybe a couple of other deductibles are negotiable if we have a good year next year. So of course, that's what we all want to happen. The only other item that is not included in this, the cyber liability coverage does not renew till February, so I don't have any information on that yet. I won't have probably until your January meeting to present the cyber renewal.
You knew what it was last year, I can't.
Yes, I wrote it down because I knew you would ask, partner.
Thank you.
That's 2024 premium for cyber. So I know there's a ton of information here. Happy to answer any questions. Feel free to call me if you have questions after you have a chance to review everything.
Carla, I've made a site note. There will be one additional vehicle that we've recently purchased, too, that hasn't been added to that, so that will, I'll get you all that information as well. But I know you're working on putting this together as it is, but we do have that additional.
You have possession of it?
Yes. So I'm going to get you all of it in and all that kind of stuff, and then we'll, you can add it in or send it in, and then, of course, that may affect that.
Are you talking a police vehicle or?
Utility.
Oh, okay.
It's probably more than we had over a year ago.
A bucket truck or a smaller truck?
One ton.
Oh, okay.
One ton.
Okay, because a bucket truck, obviously, and the street cleaner, those are going to be hefty items to add.
Yeah.
Because of the cost.
Cost, yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I kind of took your spot.
No, you're fine.
Anyone have any questions tonight for me? Thank you very much.
Since the cast is there, we'll move on to the sealed bids opener.
This one's from Venus Wilson, and it says $82,000 for the community signature building. Says with clear title insurance commandment, which would be part of our process anyway.
If I have any questions?
Motion accepted.
Is that the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else we need on that?
No, I mean, I'll work on it. I'll do the deed, and I'll order the title insurance. Typically, the seller does the title insurance. Is the board okay if I use their title insurance company? That's who I usually use as abstractive title.
Well, there's business.
All right. Well, I mean, they don't own it, so, but Keisha works there, so as long as you guys are okay, that's who I would typically use.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I'll get to work on all of that. You guys get Dave authority to sign any documents you need to perfect the deed work.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's all I need. I'll get to work on it.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
Sorry to delay this.
Are you guys all wanting to speak, or have you, as a, you're going to be a spokesman?
Greg will start, maybe.
I might start, but I think Barb is going to speak also. Are we up?
You're up.
And I need to be up there.
You can be wherever you want.
Where you want to be.
Okay, I didn't know.
You're kind of nice and central right there.
I had to be on camera. My name is Greg Gray, my wife Candy. We live at 407 Anderson Street and have lived there for 45 years. We're up here tonight because we have concerns about the Anderson Street project. We found out last week, early last week, I guess it was, with the holidays and kind of messed up on days. Tuesday afternoon, we found out part of the project was going to be to construct a nine-inch gutter curb across our driveway. We found that out about four o'clock, and they were pouring cement the next morning. If I might back up a little bit, on around October 2nd to 1st of October, we were receiving calls to come up and sign an easement agreement for the construction that was about to happen. I received a call from the, somebody not even connected with the town, the Economic Development.
Cindy.
Okay, I received a call from Cindy when I first heard about it, which is kind of out of the blue. She tried to explain a little bit about it. I called Brandy, I came up, came up here one day to see Brandy about it because I had many questions, and I really didn't know why I needed to sign an easement. She said Dave would stop by. I think about a half hour later, Doug stopped by. What he explained to me, or to us, is nothing like we're getting. It is, I mean, I could go into detail, but it's just nothing like we're getting. So I pursued the matter, I met with Dick, I'm sorry, Nick, a couple days later in his office. I presented him with an easement that was signed back in the 70s and told him I really can't sign another easement because there already is one. And so that kind of ended that chapter in it. Then they started construction, and like I said, we were blindsided by finding out not only across our property, but across our driveway, there was going to be a nine-inch curb, whatever. My question was, you know, how am I going to get over that? How am I going to use my driveway like I use it now? I've heard a lot of different stories. I've heard ramps, I've heard all kinds of things. So that is my concern up here, is I'm not going to be able to use the driveway as I use it now, either with the vehicles I have, with the vehicles that people come to see I just don't understand how they're going to fix it, that I can continue to use the driveway.
Luke, could you speak to any of this?
Yeah. Doug contacted me, let me know you guys had concerns. I met with him on my day off Wednesday, kind of went over it. He had concerns just about the height of the curb above his existing drive. The existing road in front of his house before this project was 9.88 feet per lane. As part of this project, it's getting widened to 11 foot per lane, so it's a little more manageable, as we do have semis going down Dollar General, and it's pretty narrow as is. With a two-foot roll curb, roll curb's not your standard square curb, it's meant to be driven over. I heard his complaints. I do see, you know, you don't want your driveway being too steep. Absolutely understood it. We ended up lowering the curb elevation through there by a tenth of a foot, so now that side of the road will be slightly more angled, not a concern at all from an engineering perspective. And we cut the top of the roll curb down by an inch to reduce the amount of height on the curb. As part of the project, when they come back through, they will take the top of that curb, and they will taper it back to his existing drive so that he can get to it. The unfortunate project, as we all know, we want it to be done with this project by the end of the year. Mother Nature, and unfortunately Center Point, kind of set us back a little bit, so they are not going to be able to pave it this year. It will happen next year. So obviously, he's going to be stuck with a gravel ramp off the roll curb into his drive, which is not ideal, absolutely not. Come next year, they will come back, they will take the top of that curb, and they will guide it back down to his existing drive and return it to usable. But over the winter, it will have gravel so that you can't get in.
So my concern is not this winter. It took me three tries tonight to get out of my driveway. I put it in four-wheel drive to get out. The one picture on there of my truck, I put that on there because that's how far I'm backed up and in the street before I can see oncoming traffic. So it's not a matter of just going. I have to go so far and stop to make sure nobody's coming. That's part of an ongoing issue. But still, the issue is, when they're all done, what is, what is the grade going to be? Am I still going to be able to hook up a trailer? Are other people going to be able to get up over, you know, a nine-inch curb? The other picture on there is from where my driveway is now to the top of your curb that you put. We keep saying this nine-inch, or we keep giving dimensions. Right now, it's 12 inches.
The curb, because they ripped it out, it'll come from the top and it'll taper back down, so there won't be, it won't be a jump. It'll come straight to the top of that curb. There's never going to be a big jump or anything.
But the curb, there's nothing else being cut off the curb, right?
No, correct.
Yeah, that's my point. It's 12 inches, it's not nine inches.
Yes, the curb itself, that piece, is tall in the back.
Yes, and the curb itself is nine inches, is that correct?
I do not have that dimension on the plan.
Well, that's the word that we keep being about.
I mentioned it today, it is, it's eight inches at my house. Part of it is nine, but.
Yeah, but I mean, that is.
At least eight inches.
The curb is set up on gravel, so from the existing driveway now, it's 12. But that's neither here nor there. It's, am I going to be able to use my driveway? That's my concern. Like I use it now, why, why can't I back in my driveway and hook up to an RV? Why can't I, you know, I don't know if I can, you know? You have your RV sitting like this, and your trucks like this.
I have the same.
I don't know. I actually don't know.
I have the same issues that he does, and I have people in my family I know that cannot pull in my driveway. I know they won't, they'll bottom out. I had a hard time getting out tonight. I practiced before I came because the guys were standing out there, and it is terrible. I can barely get out of my driveway. I just don't think, why would you do that to us, you know? I mean, and if it's to work on the water situation, Dave Brown knows that I put in a grate to take care of the water that went into my garage for years and years and years, even though I asked the town, came to the board, asked them to do something about that years ago, before any of you, I know. But the water came right down the street, ran right into their garage, they had water in their garage, ran into mine. They also got theirs fixed just last year. I did mine several years ago. This is nothing, this is not a benefit of any sort to us that we could see. I mean, and it's coming down this gutter, and I have this thing in my yard that is going to stop right there in the middle of my yard, which I think is going to lower my property value. None of you people would want that in your yard. It stopped. It looks like the town ran out of money. Why isn't it going to go all the way down to that fancy little ditch they put in in the very beginning? That would take care of water. I mean, that does nothing. It stops right in the middle of my, not even the middle of my yard. It's going to look terrible. And we've talked to the workers out there, every one of them says this, this whole project is ridiculous. And the guy told me, he said, this is going to look really stupid in your yard. Yeah, thank you. I mean, what, what in the world? And I have another question, I mean, I have a question. At Dr. Swaim's, he has the same type of gutter thing that goes in front of his property, but he doesn't have to deal with the pump to pull into the drive. And I know they said it was.
The picture's on the board.
Okay. Greg got it, Greg has a picture of it. He doesn't have to deal with that. If we didn't have to deal with that, we could live with this maybe. I mean, I don't, I'm having.
We don't understand why that driveway.
His property is located near the peak of the hill, therefore there's not a lot of runoff heading directly towards his. If you remove the curb from in front of your driveway, everything from that peak heading east is going to directly shed off, and you're going to get all that water.
But you could put a drain on either side of our driveway, just like you did on yours. Why not? That's my question.
If we were to do that, we would end up with another six drains going right through there, which is a huge increase.
I have a comment, I was like, why does everything have to be so high? Like, why is this curb above our property? Normally, you think of a curb that goes along the ground of your property, expect it to go up our driveway, kind of have a little ease down into the street, that like, why is everything so high?
The existing road is matching as it was when we surveyed it. When we surveyed it, it had some ups and downs because it was a pretty rough road. We smoothed that out, it's matching almost existing. I have the profiles here, if you want to take a look at them. You'll never be able to drive down onto the road just because your guys' house, your house is so much lower than the road. With the curb, that adds height to it. With the widened roadway, that's going to add a little height to it.
Did you make the comment to us that you knew our driveway was going to be a problem when you designed it?
I knew it'd have to taper back. That is, that's absolutely true. That's, that's part of, when you come in and you put in curb that's this tall in a place with no curb, you're going to have a hard time getting things back.
So why wasn't there, why wasn't there another plan then?
The plan is to come off the top of that.
That's your plan, right?
I was hired to design it, yes.
That's your plan, which somebody else might have designed another plan, is that correct?
I mean, every engineer is going to design things a little bit.
Exactly.
Well, I don't know what options there are to do there, Luke, I mean, what can we find to make this?
Standard protocol is to come off the top, and we're going to taper down. Obviously, we can't do anything now, it's got wind plus rain, but that's, that's our work.
When it snows, I won't be able to get out. I know I won't. There, I had a hard time getting out this evening.
So is everything been poured up there?
They got to do some hand pouring stuff.
They're pouring tomorrow.
They're pouring tomorrow, the other side of the driveway. So then, the entire driveway will be blocked.
Will be blocked.
It's not my concern how I get through the winter, it's the end result. Yeah, I can put up with construction. I have no complaint on that. I mean, we were happy that it was going to happen until last week. We were happy. I can put up with anything, but it's the end result. I mean, I was told this morning by one of the foremen, I have nothing to do with that property, it's not my property. If I don't like it, I can sell my house and move out to the country with a few expletives in there. That's what I was told this morning.
Contractor told you that?
The foreman told me, I believe, he's a foreman. He told me to quit talking to his help, and if I didn't like it, I could sell my effing house and move to the country. Yeah.
Well, you know, that's unfortunate.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, those guys didn't design it, they're just doing a job they were told to do.
I told them that. I understand that totally.
I'm sure they're not the best to give them the weather, but still, it's not excuse to talk like that. Yeah, I don't know.
So let me ask you this, Luke, because I haven't been up there.
I know. We'd like for somebody to come.
With love, somebody to go and look at.
Yeah, we've talked to you and Park, you and Park both. I'd love for you to stop by. Park, I don't live very far from you, you could just swing down there anytime.
Well, you have to realize.
We really appreciate it.
We as a member can't do anything out of, just come and give a thing.
No, I know, but it'd be easier to understand, I think, if you saw it.
Well, the pictures still do a good job.
Yeah, Greg's got a lot of pictures.
No, they don't. No, you're wrong.
But you really can't get it until you stand there and look at it.
Stand on our porch and look out at the street now.
Let me ask you this, Luke. How much of a lift? How much of a lip? And I realize if we get a goose grounder, you're going to have run of it, which both of you prepared your driveways. You know, so I'm not minimizing that. I'm not saying that. But if we somehow can lower that curb height and make it to where they can drive over it, I mean, what are we looking at? In other words, instead of having a curb coming up like this, having it, you know, coming up and just making it an easy two or three inches, I mean, would that...
That would help, yes.
I did that myself with blacktop.
Right.
At the end of my curb. There's a gentleman down the street that made his own cement curb. It doesn't take much. I've never seen a tidal wave coming down the street. You know, it's this, it's this much.
It looks out of place. It really does.
Well, I mean, obviously, you know, they've done curbs like that in many places. I mean, I know it's an odd situation because you guys both kind of live on a hill. I mean, not so much a hill.
We don't want you to make it worse. You know, we struggle with that and we don't want it to be worse.
As far as pouring concrete tomorrow, I mean, I don't know what the board would want to do with that, but...
I spoke to Foyt, the guy that owns the whole company. He actually called me on Thanksgiving. He said, "Once we're all said and done with this, it'll look good. You guys will be happy."
Well, we keep hearing that. That doesn't mean anything to us. That's everybody's opinion.
I won't be happy if they stop that thing in the middle of my yard. I will not be happy. That's terrible.
He has said that, but that doesn't mean anything.
They need to take it all the way down the street. I mean, Greg thought it was going clear to Northwood, but I'd be happy if it went just on the other side of my yard. It looks terrible.
Yeah, it does.
And one of the guys out there, he said, "I think it looks really stupid when they get done with this." They were going to take it a little bit farther, but it would just be the gutter part. And I said, "That is really..." He said, "Yeah, it's going to look stupid." And he admitted it. So they did back it up a little tiny bit, but it's still... Yeah, that's just right past my mailbox where they put in that drain thing. And then they're going to pay, or they're going to do another little piece of that. And that was it. It needs to go all the way down to that drain that they put in. That was the whole point, to let all this water flow down and go into the drain. And why doesn't Dr. Swaim, no offense, Park, why doesn't Dr. Swaim have it across there? Anybody, why?
Have they bored the curb there?
No, he doesn't need it. He's in the top, so he doesn't. He's not catching any water running down along that curb. The only water he's catching is right in front of him that flows directly at him.
But he's got the curb all along there on his property, but he doesn't have it in front of his driveway. Why can't we have it not in front of our driveway?
Because the water flows eastward along that curb. And if there's no curb, it will continue to flood along your houses.
So you can put a drain on our sides like you did on Park.
Which will require an additional drain at every single person's house all the way down the road.
Whatever it takes.
Whatever it takes.
Prohibitable cost.
Get rid of the curb.
Any, any problem.
Then do nothing. I'd be more satisfied with that.
I would too. I wouldn't have any problem with water. I've had any problem with water for a long time.
Well, I don't think I can meet you guys tomorrow night. I'm going to Pendleton to work. And Thursday, I will be in Bloomington. I could possibly come over and have a look at it. I don't know what, you know, I can do, but I don't know what your schedule is or any of you guys' schedules.
Well, I'd run by and look tomorrow morning. But yeah, what do we do? Do we not pour concrete there?
We don't know.
Do you have a thought on this as far as...
I'd rather look at it before we talk about it, really.
I mean, would any one of you want that running across in front of your house and have it go over?
I'd swing by and look at it tomorrow.
I mean, really? Park, I know you wouldn't.
Right, right.
I know.
Well, we just had, you know, this whole project started with the best of intentions. Getting another problem solved up there.
We understand that.
And no one came and talked, no one came to talk to me at all about it. I knew nothing.
Well, you know, we're in here looking at drawings. You can't visualize this stuff.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I've seen some of those drawings.
Unfortunately, you two have a very unique driveway that's causing problems when you put a curb in. So yeah, I didn't realize. I assumed there's curb going in there to the Park Clinic. I didn't realize they weren't putting one there. So what do you do? You put a drain on each side there?
Just on the west side.
On the west side.
East side, it really, it's not catching anything. So there's no reason to pour curb when you don't need it, I guess is my point.
Well, what happens if you take the curb out in front of their houses?
Everything to the west of him is going to flow directly into him and everything to the west of her is going to flow directly into her.
So where is the basins at right now?
I mean, there is a basin north. There's a basin directly to the east of Park Clinic and then directly to the east of Miss Luden's Drive.
Okay.
Yeah, if they remove the curb and leave all the other curb, then yeah, they will flood us out big time. Because he's channeling all the water that way.
So where do your trucks park at here, Craig?
Pardon?
Where have your trucks parked?
That's where I stop to see if there's oncoming traffic.
Okay.
Okay? They have not put the curb there yet.
Right.
That's where I'm getting in and out till tomorrow. They're going to pour that.
Okay, but west of, west of your truck?
The curb is there now.
It's there, but there's no...
There it is, right there.
There's no basin west of this?
So it's just all curb right now?
Yeah. Water runs down to the curb. It runs along the curb to minimize the basin.
Well, this is going to sound like a stupid question. But being on that, that's on the high side, is there piping in there?
It's piping.
I mean, is there a storm drain in like this area right here? I mean, we're on the rise right here. Is there anything in there?
There's an underdrain underneath it, but no, there's nothing running under it. All storm basins on this side head to the north and collect in the main line.
Okay, so west of this is right, what I'm trying to say is that's Swaim's office, that's the doctor's office, so...
So here's his entrance. There's his inlet. Your high point, the road is here.
Okay, so there's curbing. Well, there's obviously curbing all the way through, but where's the piping start?
So this inlet taps across. And your actual storm line runs all the way along the north side of the road. In order to minimize cost, if you run storm lines on both sides, you're effectively doubling your pipeline.
That's what I was going to ask. If, what would the cost be to...
A couple more.
Add in what's...
That's where the thing's stopping. And then my yard is all down here.
Right.
Oh, okay, okay.
What would it take to go across the road at the peak of this? I mean, like just west of Craig and Candy's property? I mean, like right at their driveway? I mean, two feet west of it?
I mean, you'd have to add another curb inlet, rip out that road section and tap into the storm on that side. Usually, you never want to tap into a storm pipe without a structure because obviously you can't get to the tap.
Right.
It's been done before. I don't like it. Yeah, there's no storm structure there. If you're looking at one, preferably two storm structures cut across the road and then obviously the removal of curb between their properties.
Well, I'm just going to ask if you can put it, you know, put something together so the board has an idea of what we're looking at cost-wise. And I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but I'd like to talk to Roger. I'd like to, I'd like to talk to Roger about this.
You know, it would stop the water up to their drive. Well, right after, well, how much distance between your drive and your drive? It's not a lot. Well, you got the front yard.
Fifty or sixty feet, isn't it?
Fifty, sixty feet.
At least, yeah.
So can something be put on the west side of my drive to stop those right there?
Well, I mean, that's kind of what we're looking at, I would think, to cure the problem of doing away with the curving.
And then stop that mess in my front yard, please? I mean, I know it would be hard to do and everything, but good grief.
I mean, all we can do is look at it and see what we can come up with and see what kind of a cost we're looking at. And I mean, obviously, there is going to be a concrete curb across both your driveways. But if we can make it to where it's a couple inches, two, you know, two to three inches, you guys live with that.
Yes.
Yes. That's what I thought it was going to be.
Well, I, you know, I would have thought so too, but I, I mean, I don't know, you know, like I said, without, without putting a cost together and again, and this is going to sound stupid, but bear with me. If this, if both of you guys' sections that are open right now are not poured tomorrow, is it, I mean, and left open basically for the winter, are you going to have an issue with that as far as...
No.
No, I don't care what happens this winter. I care about the final result.
Well, I mean, I just hate to, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous to go ahead and...
I'm speaking for myself.
So are you saying, but are you saying if there's no curb, they're going to get overrun with water?
Probably not this winter because it's not...
Yeah.
No, probably not.
Before they finish in this road as this winter, what's the final surface going to be?
They're putting down the base, but not the top surface.
So they are going to try to throw some blacktop there?
The batter day, we were told. The top surface would come next spring.
So they're going to mill it?
Yeah, going to mill it down and put down a base, is my understanding.
Wow, okay. A little cold up that face.
That's what I asked him and he reassured me that it's no issue to put down the base and the surface will hopefully...
The base can go down cold if it has to, so that's not an issue, but...
Well, yeah, the alternative, it's is to do that. Collection basin west of each driveway entrance.
Well, I'm going to ask your family's professional opinion on that. I mean, would you not pour that?
I wouldn't pour it because you're going to have to do something to it later anyway, it sounds like. Borrowing is going to cause you severe financial repercussions to not pour it tomorrow, but they're going to have to come back and do other stuff anyway, so I don't realize there's going to be a financial cost to holding off on doing it.
I understood that the project was supposed to have been done today anyway, so they're, so, I mean, it shouldn't cost the town extra because they didn't get it done anyway.
Well, I don't know if we had claws in that. This one was, this was a little different deal.
That would be a question of them though. Is there a financial cost to delaying doing it till the spring? I guess would be my question. I don't see why it would be. Maybe we just cancel their match of concrete. They wouldn't provide their physical workforce to do that.
Okay, can you talk to Doug Mattingman tonight?
Doug Mattingman?
Isn't that who it is, the foreman?
Foyt, yes. Yeah, Magdul. They've been good to work with. We've worked with, they did South Market a lot.
I would appreciate it if you could step out and make a call right now. I mean, if that's possible.
Hold off on the curb in front of those two houses.
See what his suggestions are. Tell him that, you know, we would really like to lean towards not pouring it.
Is there going to be a financial consequence to doing that? That's what would be the question.
I will, I will get ahold of him. I'm going to get ahold of him.
The other question I'd like to know from them is whether or not if we do trim it down to like a three-inch or four-inch, that's going to have a consequence also.
There's a much larger chance that water will overrun that curb and back onto their properties.
Perhaps in a heavy rain, right? But they're prepared for some water because they've already invested in a system to get that.
I would agree with, I mean, if we had a two or three-inch curb, it would take...
It'd take a hard rain.
I'm just going to say it's going to take one hell of a rain.
That roll curb doesn't have a lot of depth to it anyways, just because it's meant to be gentle so you can't drive over it.
So, I mean, I don't...
Do you fear if we stop and look at that like throughout the week and just take a look at the fall and things like that in person? It's really hard to...
Yes, it is hard.
I just don't like the project.
Oh, please come over, anytime. I'm almost always home. Come on over. I don't even know you're out there probably, but...
Yeah, I don't know what it'd be, but I would like to at least look at it.
Yes.
It'd be great.
Well, I mean, I don't know what else we can do for you seeing the other, I mean, we'll stop. I mean, I'll stop and take a look at it. I'll try to make contact with all of you and...
You've done a lot just listening to your concerns. We didn't know where to turn, what to do.
Right.
Well, you know, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll make something. Well, I appreciate you guys coming in. I think we all stayed civil, so. I appreciate it. Thank you, Derek.
Thanks again, Candy.
Who's picking over that?
There are water.
Don't get that.
I guess mine, you better run it.
There are water.
They'll do. Okay, all right, thank you. Randy, you ready?
I just have planes for $357,407.24 that I would like approved, please.
Anybody know, on the last page at top, we had probably just an inspection, $7,195 for the Dean's Fire Company, Area One, probably a ladder truck.
That is the money that comes from the Adams Township, pay for that. It's not actually town funds.
So they reimbursed us?
But no, they, that's the contract money from Adams Township that comes to the town in the general fund. And then that's money, it's $13,000 annually. That's money that is spent back through on the aerial for any repairs, so that's what that is. We got that money. We get it in January, July.
We had a contractor fire for thirteen, some years, so we used that to pay this.
Yes.
But that was the ladder?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor.
And then I didn't put anything else up there, but if you want to go ahead and, do you want to go ahead and discuss or somebody make a motion about the 25 budget?
Oh, well, yeah, we talked about the budget for a while. Last meeting, has anybody had any further thoughts on that as far as, this is not our rate base fund. This is the utilities and all the other, anybody? I'll say.
All in favor?
That's all I have.
Are you opposed?
No, I'm beating. I'm not voting on any of them.
So this year, we've had, or this month, we've had 60 entries, zero felonies, five misdemeanors, 12 infractions, one ordinance violation, and 65 warnings. Last year in November, we had 25 entries with two felonies, six misdemeanors, seven infractions, zero ordinance violations, and 13 warnings. We have hometown holidays coming up on the December 7th, starting at 4 with Fun Walk. 5:00 PM, the festivities, 6:00 PM, the parade, 7:30, the tree lighting, and 7:45, the ugly sweater contest. I think we'll be blocking off the three inner planes of the square.
All right. That it?
That's it.
Good, thank you, Bill. Obviously, Doug's not here. He did send an email outlining what he was going to be, his guys were going to be doing this week. He did say the transfer switch for the water plants in. He did end up texting me and saying it's going in tomorrow.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. Milling is supposed to be starting tomorrow on Anderson?
It's like today.
What's this? They're grinding to build a road on Virginia's tree access to power lines and continuing to tremble.
That's down there, probably at the lift station, Virginia Holler. I'm guessing it goes east of that, furthest back road, gets those back to the power line that goes all the way behind Woodland over to Porter's on the curb there.
Okay. There is a water leak, they're waiting on locates. As soon as it's good, they'll make that repair. The electric department should be finishing up the snowflakes this week on the west side of Square. He wasn't sure if that was gonna happen, and said if that's not the case, that they would be working on streetlights. But I'm hoping we get those snowflakes up. Obviously, our Main Street's having their hometown holiday Saturday, so I think Brandy was gonna announce that a little later, but...
Is it a problem with the, they just haven't had time, or is there a problem with...
Uh, there was a little issue with the brackets, and they were gonna send them off to have them powder coated, powder coated, and...
Aesthetics and aesthetics.
Yeah, so, and I don't know what the status is of that, to be honest with you. Do you know, Brandy? I mean, we'll try to find out tomorrow what's going on there, so. And that's about all for Doug. Bruce, you got any?
I do.
Wow, that's a list.
Well, I just wanted you guys to see a copy of this. This is an email that I sent to Jeff in February twenty-three. It's kind of a wish list of things that need to be worked on at the wastewater plant. And both of the things that we got wrote up for, IDM, were on that list. I, I just want you guys to know that I am proactive, and I, I am trying to work on this stuff, but...
Okay, so...
Some of this has been taken...
There's a couple of things on there, the brushes have been replaced.
Which number is that?
Eleven.
Yeah, there's a couple of things on there that have been done, but I just wanted you guys to know that, you know, we have, I went over that list with Jeff, and when Roger came down when we were doing the district project, Roger and I went through that list too, and talked about several of those things.
So, yeah...
Has that valve been rebuilt on the storm pond?
It has not been. I had them come and look at it, and they were supposed to send me a quote, and, you know, that goes...
Who's that, what company?
Bill Anderson. I need to get back with him on that. That's another thing I need to follow up on. The generators, of course, you know what's going on with those.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Six more, the generator's supposed to be seven or so more.
Bruce and I met, and Doug met with Houston Electric about two weeks ago. Yeah, we're supposed to be getting some updated quotes. They had quotes from back in twenty-three.
Yeah, that was, that was January, February twenty-three.
We're generators down at the plant, there's the big one, and then the smaller one. I can't tell you exactly which were powered what, but that was on a hundred fifty thousand back in twenty-three. And then the other issue, more urgent, is the mobile generator. The IDM says we need to power our lift stations, and that, 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 that thing there is, you're looking at a hundred fifty to a hundred ninety thousand for a mobile generator. There's twenty-four thousand and a hundred, a hundred and ninety's one bid to put in. Actually, both companies have bid that. It's about twenty-four thousand, putting the hookups at the five different lift stations. The rest of it's just all generator-related. You're supposed to get us updated quotes. So bottom line, you're looking around three hundred and forty thousand in generator costs. But hey, IBM wants it, IBM gets it. So, so we're placing, we don't have a choice. So the cat generator, Bruce, the cat generator down there, and is that still gonna be an issue? We get the two generators are quoting for us?
No, that's, that's replacing the cat.
That's replacing the cat, so that would go away, so we would have...
So you'll still have the coler back up behind it.
We got a coler down there too.
We do.
How's it, condition one?
It's, 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 okay.
Okay. Now, the UV stuff, are we getting a quote on that?
Yeah, we should be getting a quote.
We're getting quotes on that.
Earlier about it, bill they sent, they sent a bill for the guy that came out.
Okay.
I think it was November the sixth when he came. And they sent me a list of some parts, but, you know, they haven't given me a full quote on, they haven't decided if we should try to refurb or replace it, and that's what they're working on now.
Okay.
I should be here somewhere else saying about that.
Did we only install that washer compact, too?
That was a...
That was from prison. Yeah, they wanted the headwards too. At least we know kind of what they cost, and who called it, installed it.
That was kind of the wastewater plant's kind of phase two of that project, and...
Another two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It really is two hundred thousand, and it went...
What is it, that number? It seemed to be the magic number. Okay. Well, anyway, yeah, I wanted to bring up the, the generators. We should be getting some, some information on those. Anything else, Bruce?
No, I, I just wanted you guys to know that I'm just not down there quoting on my phones. I do have a...
Didn't think you were.
I, I do have a plan, so I try to be proactive on that stuff, so we don't...
Can we move on from the sewer plant?
Yeah, yeah.
You got anything on that bike?
Uh, yeah, there's a couple of things I want you to be aware of. We got a high-service pump, but Blue's pop here recently, so I'm waiting to get a quote from Peerless, come down and look at, and get a quote from Peerless on that. Also, there is a small leak on the older detention tank out there. They're gonna come and look at that as well, to see what we can do to remedy it. It's on a doorway, so if worse comes to worst, we'll just replace the door on it. Then the other thing is, they've been waiting on material for, well, four, so they're hoping to get on to that this next week, so...
So they're about done, about done with the...
Well, they, they, yeah, they gotta line it and reset them over.
So even where that, we wanted to come in and give us a...
Well, aid to clean the soil, but that, you know, that one thing that original...
Right, well, you know, everything they did in their original quoting, and plus what additionally they found and did, I mean, we need a nice summary of that, because we incorporate it into our asset management plan, and, yeah, just be nice to have them come and see us when they're done, so.
You got anything, Luke?
I'd like to further discuss the Anderson, I don't know if we need to do that in public meeting, or if you guys wanna do it afterwards, I don't...
Well, really not.
I just got a picture of it, I mean, I discussed it with Doug, I discussed it with Foyts. We really don't have any issues or major concerns. That's, that's the guy that made me talk. So that's from top of curb, heading back down. That's, we're gonna taper it back even further? I don't see that as terribly aggressive, in my opinion. I don't believe the whole I couldn't get on my drive. Obviously, they are the two worst drives, they sit in the wall if you know what we're talking.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the gravel there, so they can get over and get out. When we taper it back, we'll probably go a little further on his, so that it is a little more gentle.
So would you guys be able to, is the plan to go in and actually tear it out, do a subbase concrete, and like, what are we talking about? I mean, that probably wasn't the original design.
As far as tapering back to his entrance? So there's always gonna be a taper, when you put the curb in, you gotta taper it back. If we wanna go a little further on his, to make sure it's a little more gentle...
But again, what material are we using, how they built it, how's it being constructed?
That's what he does, asphalt currently, so typically, you would come back with asphalt. If he wants to concrete it, and that could be something you guys say, sure, we'll concrete it, make you happy. I went out there, worked with him. So that's the top curb by the board, and that's the rock tapered back. And it can be tapered back all the way to the concrete way back there, it has to be, but, that's the, that's the approach back at the moment. The other driveways, even less than that. The top curb, back of curb is two foot inside the historical right away, so even before, we went and tried to acquire that, so all that is within the town road. It tapers back onto their property. The decision is your guys' really, if you want it ripped out, or you want extra, and what's added, we absolutely can.
Well, if we don't put in, that's gonna be quite expensive, you know, that's...
If we do put in, yeah. Or you can rip all that out on that side, and leave it be. I think, and the contractor, I never heard any of them say anything bad about it. They all said that once it's all said and done, it'll look really good. I don't know if that's them telling me what I wanna hear, or what she wants to hear. Never know with that. But I did talk to Foyts, he called me on Thanksgiving, because he knew I was worried about it, and I got to with him. He said, "When it's done, it's gonna look sweet, I'm not worried about the slope." That's, that's what I got for you.
Well, I think what they're, I mean, as far as the slope, I think their issue is, one, wintertime, and they're obviously climbing out there, it's gonna be a foot, another foot. And Greg, I, I guess I see what he's talking about, as far as having the trailer parked on the flat, which he does, and he's coming into his truck, you know, and even more of a slope.
Which their driveway is not that long.
No, it's, it's pretty short, so...
It's, before we even started, it was aggressive down, and their house is way in the line. So when you go adding that curb in, it adds a bit of an issue. I think it'll be okay. We really don't know until it's all done, but you guys tell me how you want to proceed. I encourage you to go by, look at it. I looked at it before I came here, and it looked...
Well, the whole point is, if they're gonna pour it tomorrow, then, I mean, we're gonna be putting, probably a couple of yards, I don't know, maybe three yards of concrete at the most.
Is that, not, not even...
I mean, we're gonna pay for three yards of concrete. So I, I don't know what you guys want to do.
Well, they left here with us, the understanding we were going to, at the bay.
Well, I mean, it's a matter of getting them stopped before they come.
Say, I got his phone number, I'll call him, but I did go out there, I checked on it, tweaked him down a little bit, try and make him happy. She was upset that the curb was ending in the middle of your yard. We're going to this road, and it's gonna take the curb to that road. I mean, I gotta pick somewhere to stop it.
It was my understanding that the curb was going from nine inches down to like five inches, is what I was told.
Well, that's how it drops, like on Stark Street, it dropped down on Stark. Well, maybe, I don't know, it's similar, it's gonna be a similar type of curb. Any inch away on Stark, they dropped it down.
Yeah, so full heights up here, they cut an inch and a half off the back of it, at their entrances, to kind of make it a little more gentle. Take a look at it. If you guys want it actually made, let me know, we'll make it happen, but...
Well...
Well, like I said, I can't do it tomorrow.
Well, I, I can go out there and look, but I, 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 I agree that I'll do a little picture, yeah, it looks pretty steep. But, again, you don't know until the thing's done, exactly, after a little look. But again, we told these, these, these folks tonight, what we're gonna do, and are we gonna do that or not?
I'm in favor of not pouring it, I mean, I don't...
Say, we can absolutely hold off until you guys make a final decision.
Because you wouldn't taper it until next year anyway, correct?
Well, they taper it rock.
As far as, yeah, they can do rock. Unfortunately, like I said, you know, we wanted to have this done, but it got put off.
So they'll be there all winter, with half a curb, and brother, yeah.
If that's what they want, then, yeah.
Way out.
Say, obviously, looking at it in person's gonna be your best judgment call. I can show you pictures, they can show you pictures. I don't know if it was backfilled on the pictures they showed you or not, but...
No.
They went and backfilled dirt today, and when you got a big lip like that, it's pretty, pretty alarming, for sure. But when you go and you backfill the dirt, and you grade it back down, it's, it calms down a lot. It's not my decision, I didn't tell them what was gonna happen, I didn't tell them what we're gonna do. Absolutely.
Well, they'll be out there before sunup tomorrow to do their thing.
Cameron, it's gonna be like a long day, isn't it?
Oh, they'll be there.
Had stopped them, I'm amazed, what they did today.
Yeah, I can call him tonight and tell him to hold off on those two drives tomorrow.
I mean, I'm, I'm good with that, do we need a motion to make this official, or?
Yeah, look at Matt Rich, he'll want to do that.
Somebody wanna make that motion, or you want me to?
I'm moving.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
There you have it.
Okay, I will call him and tell him to hold off. If you guys will let me know as soon as you've made a decision, we can either, and the two options I see is adding a couple more inlets, which is gonna be expensive, or you can rip out the entire south side, and they can go without curbing it, and it will continue to sheet flow onto their properties as it is.
Well, we ripped out the south curb all the way down from top to hill there.
Yeah.
Solved a couple problems, there's no, no issue with the...
They're happy.
That, they're happy, and you don't have curbs, you know, curbs stopping in the middle of your yard, which, that's unfortunate reality of projects, they stop somewhere.
How many, how many structures are in there right now, from Swains East?
One.
That's a more...
Two, we could, we could pause it, heck, we could pause it halfway through Swains, so that the water isn't dumping onto their yard, most of it caught Swains. Like I said, I encourage you to go look at it. I went and looked at it tonight, it didn't, didn't scream at me. Is it more steep than his current drive? Absolutely. We widened the road, we added the curb, that's what happens, but...
Well, I think we beat this horse to death, so...
Make a motion, that's what we're doing, who's calling, who's calling? You calling Mattingman?
Yep.
All right, what kind of business you got?
Well, just one thing, last meeting, I should've brought it up. We had a cemetery board meeting, we could go today, and I forgot to come up to the last meeting. We, we're looking at, and Mark Richman brought it up, we, we wanted to increase the disinterment fee in our cemetery ordinance, up to twenty-one hundred.
How often does that happen?
Not often, but I can't remember the whole conversation. But yeah, we've talked about a couple meetings, and in that fee, looking at other cemeteries, that's one that we're kind of a little on, apparently. It was Kevin's the expert on...
Disinterment?
Disinterment fees. But yeah, that was suggesting that we do update that, so...
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
That it?
Yep.
Anybody else got any old business?
Got a do, we did...
Oh, there was a motion, I didn't sum it up, I didn't hear it. All in favor?
I don't have anything.
Would you guys mind...
You're gonna have to start yelling at me.
Would you mind to vote real quick for Main Street on their street closures, just to have that documented, and they'll do insides of Market and High, and all of Jefferson, as they've done for the holiday in the past.
Make a motion. Second.
Thank you.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Thanks.
Did you have those times again, like what, what's that?
Four o'clock is the fun, like a walk. Five o'clock is the...
Is there any other new business?
Festivity, six o'clock the parade, seven thirty tree lighting, seven forty-five the Ugly Sweater Contest.
Is that another, any other new business? Anybody have any public comment?
I think we should adjourn.
My last motion?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.